I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls City Council Meeting for Tuesday, June the thirteenth to order. Roll call please.
How about he?
Present.
Altough.
Present.
Carpenter.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
McCusker.
Yeah.
Mayor Robinson.
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everyone and welcome inside to the air conditioning on a sweltering night in Minnesota. At this time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Some of.
Motion by Ken.
Second.
Second by Cedar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. That moves us on to public input this evening. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to speak to the council on anything not on the agenda?
Come on up to the podium. Welcome.
Yep, just sign in for us there and give us your name and address.
Hi, good evening, I'm Karen Adele. On behalf of community members, tennis coaches and tennis players, we're asking the city to consider our request to contribute funds to help cover the cost of resurfacing the eight tennis courts located just east of the high school. As these are the only courts in town, many city members use these courts for recreational tennis. As of now, the courts are in bad shape with some of them deemed unplayable. If the courts don't get resurfaced this summer, they will further degrade. Also, the high school and middle school tennis teams wouldn't be able to host any home matches or weekend tennis tournaments. These home matches and tournaments bring many visitors to town for the day who in turn support our local businesses and restaurants. In this day and age of less physical activity for people of all ages, we'd like to call attention to the benefit of staying active. Tennis is a great lifelong sport. It can be played by people of all ages. It's inexpensive and it's currently available to all members of the community. It's also a great social outlet and a great way to stay active. Having tennis courts in a city our size has a positive impact and contributes to the park and rec activities available to our citizens. We respectfully request your support of this proposal. Thank you.
Thanks Karen.
Is there anyone else? And that'll be something that we'll end up having to discuss with the school and seeing what if anything that we can do. Okay, anybody else wishing to address the council on their public input this evening? If not, we're gonna move on to item six on the agenda this evening, presentations, and the first one is the police officer badge pinning.
Thank you Mayor, Council. Very pleased this evening to be bringing our newest officer, Officer Christine Good, before you tonight to be sworn in and then to have her badge pinned on. You've previously heard me talk about, you know, why we do a pinning ceremony. Essentially, it's two things. First, for an officer, this is a really big deal. This is, you know, if this is their first job, this is starting their career. And I think that, you know, having that recognition from, you know, this body as well as the community of, you know, what they have achieved and, you know, that this is the first step in their career is important. And secondly, it's just to instill upon the officer what this means. Law enforcement has been under some negative press the last few years. Some of it was self-inflicted, some of it wasn't. I've been an officer for more years than I will say, but during that time, I've seen progressions within this profession. And one of the things that I've heard lately in the last dozen years was officers needed to have a warrior mentality. And I've never really held to that. More so because we're a paramilitary organization, but, you know, we're not the military. We do a lot more than just enforce laws. At two in the morning when an eighty-four year old woman calls because there's a bat in her house, we're the ones that show up. When somebody has a heart attack, we're often the first ones there. And I feel that we serve our communities more than we're here to do warrior type activities. And so I've always thought of ourselves more like knights of old, where we were there to protect the community, to serve those, to be guardians. And with that, you know, I think that it's better to be thought of in that context because we serve with honor, integrity and courage. And we protect those who can't protect themselves. And so this evening, Mayor is going to swear in our newest officer and then she's chosen her husband to pin her badge on. And as he pins her badge on, I want to remind our newest officer Christine that the badge, I hope, gives her strength and fills her heart with goodness and compassion. Because it's a tremendous responsibility that we carry within our communities and that she also remembers to never use that authority to do harm, but only good. And always defend those in need. So Mayor, if you would be so kind as to swear in Christine Good.
You'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Aye, Christine Good.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all the duties.
And perform all the duties.
A police officer of the Cannon Falls Police Department.
A police officer of the Cannon Falls Police Department.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Don't run away Christine, David. My pleasure to give you her badge because you would pin it on.
Congratulations, thank you, and I like your last name.
I know, it's such a great name for an officer, I love it.
Thank you.
The best officer name.
You're welcome.
Congratulations, welcome. Riveting, promises to be riveting.
Sure, he wants to punish her right away.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks for coming folks.
Robbie, I think we need to do this officer thing more often so we get people in here like this tonight.
Okay. All right. So at this time, we're gonna move on to the next presentation this evening and I'd like to introduce Rod Johnson from the Shepherd Center who is gonna introduce our speaker. All right, well, thank you for the opportunity to tell you a little bit about Shepherd Center. As Robbie said, I'm the Executive Director of Shepherd Center and I just wanted to make a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank the city for your support of Shepherd Center. Very important to us, we appreciate it very, very much. I also wanted to point out that one of the goals of Shepherd Center is to make Cannon Falls a community that's attractive to seniors. We want seniors to stay here, we want seniors to move here and we hope that by some of the programs and services we offer at Shepherd Center that this will appeal to seniors. In a moment, John Hobart's gonna kinda go through some of the things we're involved in. I want to touch on a couple of things that we're working on. These aren't for sure, but these are things we'd like to do here eventually. We're talking right now with Mayo Clinic Health Systems, the hospital, the clinic up there. We would love to provide valet parking at the hospital. We think that'd be a great service to the elderly, to young mothers and especially in the winter, so we're working on that. We're working on a program where maybe we hopefully can get some bicycles here that people can use to go down the trail. So those are a couple of things we're working on. Another thing, if you, you might be aware that one of our biggest fundraisers are concerts. And I've been in negotiations, we have, and I was on the phone this afternoon and we have a verbal agreement, breaking news here, on September twenty-fourth, it looks like we're gonna be bringing in Larry Gatlin and the Gatlin Brothers. So they'll be performing September twenty-fourth at the Cannon Falls Auditorium fundraising concert for Shepherd Center. And again, thank you to the city for all of your support over the years, we appreciate it. And John Hobart, now past Chairman of Shepherd Center, has put together a little presentation that'll really kinda get you up to date on what we've been up to. So John, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening everybody, I think everyone knows me, maybe Cedar doesn't, that there's, I taught high school here for twenty-four years, I think most of you are aware. Coached football and softball. And then I left the school to take college, or a college job in nineteen ninety-four and I worked there until two thousand and eleven, so I have forty-one years in education. So I got to thinking, what am I gonna do when I retire? When I retired in two thousand and eleven, I thought there's no better thing for me to do than to get involved with the senior center here and I've been quite involved since, since I started my retirement. And I really enjoy it. So over on the left, there, the people here can private pivot your, your seats a little bit. This is our current board everybody. And you can see in the back row, Jim Nelson, Lauren Evanrude, Denny Shookwist, myself, Dick Mensing and Gary Esterby. In the front row, all the girls, Diane Lateral, K. Myers, Kara Sheal, Joyce Phalink and Helen Baumann. Currently Joyce Phalink is our chairperson and Dick Mensing is chair-elect next year. And I'm past chair, but I'll still be on the council next year, Board of Directors. So that's the group of people that kinda put things together here in Cannon Falls for our senior center. And they all do a remarkable job, we all get high pay, you know, for doing this, which is zero. So Rod's currently our director, he's been here for many, many years. And Twilight Geikin has been our administrative secretary, but unfortunately Twilight's left us. And we have just, I believe Rod mentioned hired a new administrative, administrative secretary, Jody Falk has taken her position and she started Monday. So, so we were lucky to find somebody real fast and Rod gives me some really good reports on her at this point. Jody. This is where our program is organized everybody, I'm gonna make a few comments about all these things, but we basically have three core programs, education, fundraising and service. You can see all the different things underneath each of these and I'll be remarking on some of these. So we're gonna start with education when I get to that one. But the, we take everybody in our Board of Directors and divide them up into committees just like you do down here. And everybody serves on one committee or more. I have the privilege to head up the Education Committee as Chairman. Denny Shookwist is our fundraising finance chairman and Diane Lateral is service for it. And you can see the other folks involved there as well. So the education programs. First of all, we have a series of adventures and learning programs through the year. March seventeenth, we had Keith there and also Mike was gracious enough to come down and, and talk about the family history with the beacon. And the program went over very, very well and Keith talked about his baseball career, you can see. May nineteenth, we didn't get enough enrollment, so that one did not go. But we had planned to do a Mayo Clinic program, but had to drop that. July twenty-first, Jim Germstead's gonna try to bring some of that infantry that he's, that he's involved with, the Third Minnesota Regiment Company C into the Central Park area and set up a little mini camp down there. And then Jim's gonna talk about what they do and, and what their focus is. September twenty-second, we're gonna have one on drones. And also a separate part of the program is gonna be Department of Natural Resources program. And then November eleventh, we're gonna have a veterans program. At this point, our plan is to honor the Korean and World War II vets on this round. Last year, most of you remember, we did Vietnam vets and we're gonna expand it a little bit. Hopefully, we can work with our local post on this some this year. We're not trying to conflict with them, but only to recognize veterans in Cannon Falls. This was our first class of Vietnam vets. We did that on, right on Veterans Day last year in November. We had it at Saint Asker's Church. And since that time, we've had our second class, another fifteen people have been added to that and we hope to add two as time goes by. So if you know Vietnam veterans that have not been recognized in a special program by the government, let me know and direct them to me so I can get the information out to them. Book Buddies has been a big program for us and this continues at the high school, or elementary school. And we're very successful this year again and the kids really enjoy it. People are working with us and enjoy it. We do need more readers, if you know people that might be willing to read for us. We would like to get more people to cover when people are sick or traveling or things like that. So we do need more readers, but the program has been really successful. Educational workshops, we put those on for seniors. Some of the topics that we address, Facebook, smartphones and iPads, block printing is gonna be one. Lauren Evanrude's gonna teach this next, next year, Android phones. And then we're gonna, the big one that we're kinda looking at is a genealogy workshop where seniors can actually do some research if they have never done this and put together their family history. So this, I think, is gonna be a really successful, a really successful workshop for us in the future. Day trips, we do those. Some of the things we have planned this year, everybody, Minnesota Twins game, which we've already done. Unfortunately, they lost big time that day. We have Fort Snelling and Saint Paul Caves trip that we're planning. We're putting together Wheat Heritage Trail Tour that's gonna track the, the importance of wheat in this area many years ago. Colorado trip's coming up and Rod just told me today, we've got forty, forty people signed up to go to Colorado now this, our September. Is it September Rod, I forgot, yeah, September. So we expect to fill our forty-eight to fifty passenger bus because we've got time to do that yet. We usually take a trip to Chanhassen for our seniors. This year it'll be Greece and then we're planning a Lake Minnetonka day trip too where seniors go up and do some activities around Lake Minnetonka. So these things are real popular among our seniors in Cannon Falls. Physical activities, I was happy to hear your speaker tonight prior to us are representing the community on tennis. But we really think the activities for seniors are really vital to their health in our community. And we're trying to do as much as we can, we've built a lot of things there. Where we have Scrabble for the kinda people that aren't as active, we have five hundred cards. We use the CCC gym for walking. And Dick Mensing's putting together a outside walking group now, which will be starting real soon. Pickleball's been the big one for us, we got relatively around fifty people, fifty seniors that are fifty-five or older playing pickleball at the CCC. And I've been down here before to talk about the need for outdoor pickleball as well, but that's not why we're here tonight. Senior, traveling softball, we're having a great time with that. We play in a league and I'll show you more information on that later. We have fantasy football league in the, in the fall. We just bought a table tennis, tennis ping pong table that's at the CCC for anybody to use, it's senior. Rod talked about the biking that we're looking into. And some other things we're talking, looking at, granny basketball, senior three on three bins, senior kickball and some, and maybe a monthly bowling activity. So a lot of stuff, I think I've had a lot to do with that because of my background in athletics and everything and I think this is really important. Julie, my wife, is really involved with pickleball. She plays three times a week at least and I play once in a while, but my, I focus more on the softball. We're having a good time with that. Walking, you see the use of the gym here, Roger Underdahl walks every day down there. I can guarantee if you go down there in the morning about nine o'clock, Roger will be walking for a couple hours. We have a lot of people that come down there and do that. Pickleball, as I said, and I just talked to some gentleman from out of town, I ran into him at the Bears game last week and come to find out, he plays a lot of pickleball and he's gonna start playing with, up here now. We have people come from Northfield to play over here, we have people from just the whole area, the Cannon Valley area for the most part. But pickleball is the number one growing sport for seniors in the country. There's our boomer softball schedule, you can see we play twelve games. We play home and away twice. And we're in a league with Northfield, Ferbowl and Owatonna. And our oldest player is eighty-four. He's sitting on the front row on the right, he's eighty-four years old and still playing. And you probably recognize a lot of the other faces on that team. Fantasy football was our first year last year everybody and Roger Chan, Ron Chant was our winner last year. That was our draft up there. We'd like to grow this some more, we only had eight, eight teams now and I'd like to see it up to around at least ten. Group travel to Colorado this year, you can see all the things they're gonna see out there when they go to Colorado. I think the trip is seven fifty, isn't it Rod?
Seven fifty-nine.
Seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars buys you a, is it ten days?
Yep, our ten through the sixteenth.
Ten through the sixteenth. And you can see the other trips, we've been to Nashville with the group, we've been to San Antonio. Last year, we were in Savannah and we do a lot, at least one major trip like this every year. Triad, which Jeff's real involved with and does a super job with that, is, continues to go really well. Thanks to a person in Cannon Falls, we're lucky to have Rosie Schluter. And Rosie had sat up for, for seniors here in Cannon Falls. And our thrust is to work with law enforcement to make the community a safer place for seniors. And to help them avoid fraud, things that come up and the like. But we have a very good committee. Tom Wallner, the Deputy Sheriff for Goodyear County is on our Board of Directors, Jeff, myself, Lauren Evanrude, Rosie and Ray Kimis. There, these are the people that had that up and Rosie just does a marvelous job with us. So that's our education corps. Now our service corps, we have open houses once or twice a year. We like to have them seasonal if possible, but we've cut back on a little bit. We thought maybe four was too many, so we're probably cutting it back to about two per year. But to get the seniors in, just to have some coffee and tell them about our programs and everything like that. We usually have a summer concert down at the John Birch. And this was the last one, got caught in the rain that night, but still, it was all free. Meals on Wheels is a big part, I see a young lady sitting by me tonight, is gonna be talking about that later. But our Shepherd Center is responsible for volunteers to deliver meals. And if we have to see a need, I don't know if she's gonna bring that up tonight, I'll just throw it out. We need maybe to expand the corps a little bit more. We need maybe to expand the corps a little bit more. We have a call every once in a while at the, at the senior center that they live out of the city, just outside. And maybe it wouldn't be that hard to deliver a few meals just a little bit outside the corps. So that might be something you might consider or just pass on to your speaker tonight. So there is a real, uh, definite need for Meals on Wheels. And we revived the Cannon Falls area news. I think most of you are kinda aware of that. This is our second year, Rod, in it?
Yep.
Second year. Uh, sponsors have been a little difficult to get, but we've got it worked out now, so it's, it's gonna be continuing. So if you haven't listened to it yet, at nine twenty, on nine twenty, uh, you can get all the Cannon Falls news daily. And we're just really fortunate to have Rod as our director, a professional broadcaster, uh, announcer, and so on, uh, giving the news. So it's really a great, great program for the community. Uh, we continue to work with ARP on tax prepar- preparation. Our function in that is not to do the taxes, but to, uh, schedule it. Help them schedule, uh, tax preparation for seniors in the community that can't afford going to a normal, normal, uh, tax preparer. Health fair is another function there. You can see Phil Ruds, I call, he's kind of a baby when he got shot there. But we hope maybe it continues in the future. We have run into a little roadblock with that in that it conflicts a lot of times with other, uh, health fairs in the area. So we're not quite sure what we're gonna do with this yet, but we'd like to keep it going if possible. Additional service projects, uh, Cannon Church Interaction Council, we're represented on that. On that, uh, we have computer and internet access at the Shepherd Center for seniors uh, that don't wanna go to the library or something like that. We have August Community Table here in town. We are available for elder justice, uh, advice and probably not for advice more, but, uh, but rather to direct them to people that can help them. That's kinda what we do. Fundraising is our other core program, which is important to keep all this going. As I said, none of our, uh, our, our Board of Directors is completely, um, volunteer. The only folks that are paid in our Shepherd Center here in Cannon Falls would be Rod, who does a marvelous job in his work as director, and our administrative, administrative secretary. So that's where the funds are needed for that. You can see the different, uh, concerts over the years we've had. Uh, we're happy to bring these concerts to Cannon Falls and to get the Gatlin Brothers to come to Cannon Falls. I think that's kind of, kind of an achievement, uh, and you're gonna read more about that in the future. Family Fair works with us, uh, on receipts, so seniors and all people in the community can save their receipts from buying your food and drop them off at the Shepherd Center, and we count those and turn them in. And, uh, and, uh, Family Fair gives us some, uh, reward for that. Other fundraising programs, uh, uh, Business Fund Appeal, we, we try to get businesses here in Cannon Falls to support us in a small way. In the city, you can see there. Uh, we do appreciate, uh, all of, all of your help and, uh, your contribution. You know, it's put, the money's being put to good use. I hope you can see here. It's been put to good use. We rely on memorials, gifts, and honorariums that might pop up from time to time. And we do, we do charge a small fee for senior softball and pickleball. And pickleball is really expensive. Twenty-five dollars will get you twelve months of play in the gym. So we don't charge hardly anything for it. We just charge something to replace our equipment, basically, is what we're doing. Same thing with softball. We gotta buy bats and balls and stuff, so that's where that money goes there. In-kind support, the school district, of course, has been great there in allowing us to be in the CCC and run our program there. Currently, we're working on grant applications. We're looking into grants to, uh, help us with our fundraising. So I wanna express, uh, our special thanks to you, the Cannon Falls Council, for your continued support of the Shepherd Center of the Cannon Valley. Uh, community seniors do appreciate your support of senior center goals and objectives in making their lives more positive. So I'm here to thank you for that. Our only purpose to come tonight was to make you aware of all the things we're doing. Cause I think a lot of you, when you make your contribution, you don't quite understand what we're all about, right? So hopefully, you might have a better understanding of that after tonight and know that we're really doing a lot of things in the community. So thanks for the opportunity to be here, and, uh, if we could give all the people in Cannon Falls to give back to the community through the Shepherd Center when they get to be seniors, that'd be a great thing. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming, John. I mean, uh, great presentation, and, uh, thanks a lot for coming in. Okay, that moves us on to our next, uh, I think on the agenda night, on the agenda tonight, which is Resolution twenty-two eighty-three, which is establishing u- utility rate changes. And I will turn it over to Mr. Johnson.
All right, thank you. Uh, do you recall, City Council held a special workshop meeting on May second uh, to discuss the utility rates and then a subsequent meeting on May sixteenth to discuss rates further. And we'd, a good discussion at the last meeting. And I had, uh, Rebecca Kurtz is here from Ellers. She's in the audience. Thanks for being here again. Just in case council had additional questions from our previous discussions. Uh, she did put a, I thought, a real good summation together, her and Christina. Uh, Norquist from Ellers worked on this based on some of the questions that you had and that I'd heard subsequent to that May sixteenth meeting. And, uh, the resolution's there for your, uh, consideration and adoption. The water rates, we're looking at a, recommending a five percent increase for the rest of seventeen through, uh, March of eighteen. Five percent in eighteen, again, through the end of the year, and five percent in nineteen. And with this proposed plan, at least a five-year out, the water rates would drop to one percent each of the subsequent years, twenty and twenty-one. And sewer rates, uh, the same, five, 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 and one and one. And stor- stormwater, two percent and increasing a quarter percent for each of the next two years, and then three percent and three and a half percent in twenty and twenty-one. That's really about it. I guess we've discussed it at the last couple meetings, and Rebecca's here for further questions if you have.
I think at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. And then after that, uh, we'll, uh, do the motion, and we can discuss it after. We've heard from anybody in the public that wishes to speak. So at this time, I will open up the public hearing, uh, for the adopt, for the resolution, uh, setting our utility rates for the next three years. Is there anyone that wishes to address the council, uh, under the public hearing for utility rates? Is there anyone wishing to address the council for resolution setting the utility rates? Is there anyone wishing to address the council under Resolution twenty-two eighty-three uh, for the setting of u- utility rate charges for the next three years? If not, at this time, we will close the public hearing. And the chair will take a motion to, adopting the resolution setting utility rates for seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen.
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
By Cedar and a second by Ken. I will now open it up for discussion.
Well, since I moved for, I'll go ahead and say this. Um, of course, I've heard from citizens, and I too share it. I mean, I'll be, my bill's gonna go up too. And there's a generalized displeasure about seeing an increase that's bigger in percentage, uh, points than past ones have been. Um, and my response to that has been, and I guess I just wanna air it out and so that we are as transparent as we can be, is that better financial minds than my own have, you know, uh, concluded and advocated strongly and with good support for this. And that I understand this to be the result. The reason we're in this position is because perhaps past councils made decisions that would be more popular, that were smaller increases, and that puts us in the position that we're in today, that only a, a larger percentage point increase can solve. We have a debt burden, and this is how we meet it. And I guess, I, it's still going to be an unpopular decision, um, but I would rather be responsible than popular on this one. So that's my position. That's why I'm in favor of this measure as a necessity.
Anybody else?
I got a few things to say about it. Um, I got ahold of Ron two weeks ago and, and asked Rod if we could have a workshop, he and I, to see if we could come up with, uh, at least two or three alternatives besides one. Uh, we didn't get to that point, but he did it for me that he was gonna ask Ellers to come and to be here at the meeting. So I was hoping to, um, have a meeting with Ron and kinda do this quietly and look at some other alternatives. And I feel bad that it has to be at this meeting tonight, but I just feel this is so serious. I have to talk about it. Uh, for one thing, I totally agree that Ellers did a heck of a job of putting this out because it was so informative to sit down and read all this stuff and put it together. I will tell you, though, that, uh, the more I read it, the more I didn't sleep very well that night. Uh, for one thing, I, I don't know why we're going with a three-year program instead of just taking care of it every year like we normally do, and I was hoping Ron could probably answer that. Is there some reason we're going a three-year program instead of just one? It's always been a one-year deal.
Well, we're, we're pretty much behind the eight ball for two thousand seventeen already by the time. We have to wait thirty days after, if you approve the resolution, after you adopt the resolution. We have to wait thirty days to enact the new rates. So we're pretty well into, uh, August by that time for this year for seventeen. So seventeen and eighteen, um, and we decided, instead of having the rates kick in right away January first of eighteen, that at least wait through the first quarter of eighteen, then the second round of ra- excuse me, rate increases for eighteen would go into place. So, uh, approximately August first, I believe, would be the date, the effective date for billing, um, for seventeen. March for April billing and eighteen, and then the third year, uh, would start January first of nineteen, and then we'd get back on track on an annual basis. Now, what we talked about at a prior meeting was to allow, that would allow us as a city to do more consistent budgeting, plus allow the property owners to do budgeting, and not only property owners, but we do get calls from businesses wondering what our rates are going to do, so they can plan accordingly.
Okay. The other, the other question I have, the, the more I read this over, is I thought there was a lot in there that was unfair. I, uh, I, I think I'm the only one up here that I thought it was so serious that we should actually have another meeting about it. And I'm sure nobody wants to do that, but, uh, to give you an example of what my thinking was, I can't believe that we charge the same rate for commercial industrial that we do residential. Um, when we have concrete plants and motels and different stuff, um, that need that water and make money with that water, I, I don't understand why that charge would be the same. I also looked da- at the breakdowns of Ellers and being in the plumbing business and know how many gallons of water people use and how we figure all that stuff, um, it actually appeared to me that we're penalizing large families. We have a fee for three hundred cubic feet, and then from there to another. I couldn't quite understand how that was fair, that the larger amount of water you use, the higher you pay. I also, uh, never have liked the high price of, that we charge people for sprinkler systems. I don't know if, uh, why that should be more money. We like people to keep their places nice. The cost of pumping water for a sprinkler system is no different than the cost of pumping water for a toilet. Uh, so a lot of this stuff, as I looked it over, I totally got more confused and the more I thought about it. And I just do not think it's fair at all that we do not charge more for commercial and industrial accounts. A lot of our problems we're having today, I totally understand. I've been involved with council four years ago. Uh, Sandstone Ridge is certainly a big thing of this. But I, I will tell you that, uh, we made some mistakes up there, that, uh, we spent the money and invested in larger towers and larger piping, and then the thing fell through and we never got it. Uh, but that is not the citizens' fault. When I was on the council at that time, I take responsibility that there were some da- uh, bad decisions made. But that should not be a reason to penalize the citizens. If you make water commercially and you're running a factory in this town, uh, we're very grateful that you make an investment in the town and you hire people. But, uh, for the high-volume users, for us to put that same price tag on a residential person when you need that water, uh, I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's fair at all. So if somebody could help me with them questions, I would really appreciate it. But there's no way that I can read over all these papers and not feel bad if I approve this five percent, because to me, it's, it's just not fair. And I would rather see where we put a ten percent increase on all commercial industrial accounts and deal with it a year from now and see where we're at then. And, uh, um, I also brought up the fact, Ron, that I can't understand how we operate with sixty, seventy thousand a year being all rolled into taxes. And thank Ron for, that he told me that sometimes that's a wash because you, you got last year's gets paid up this year, and now you're rolling in the next sixty, seventy thousand. But on the other hand, uh, I don't know how a business operates that way. Um, I also told Ron that I thought there should be some kind of revolving account at the bank where we take and when them late bills come in, they automatically get turned in the bank, and it's part of our loan system. And then we charge a service charge when we come to settle that and get reimbursed. And that would bring that income in to me every month, instead of the way we're doing it now where we wait till the end of the year. So I, I don't sit here to be an expert, uh, and I don't have the answers, but I wish the council would have a workshop and really talk about this more seriously because I don't think this thing is fair at all. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I, yeah, I have a comment. Leroy, somebody said, you don't think that a larger family should pay more money for water when they use more? I mean, I, I'm confused by that.
Why, why should a family, say, if it's, uh, two sixty-seven or something for three hundred cubic feet, but their family uses six hundred cubic feet and, and, uh, they jump to the three forty-something? I don't know why you shouldn't pay the same amount for each person. Why, why should that do that?
Could I comment, Leroy? In two thousand thirteen, the state of Minnesota made us adopt a conservation rate. The more you use, the more you pay. That's the only way we have of stopping. I could ask you to save water all day, but until you get that hundred fifty dollar bill, and I'll just give you an example. I've made four visits in the last week to houses that paid double or triple what they should've been paying because they had a leaky toilet. And that's the mindset the state had. Instead of keep building more towers, bigger and grander wastewater plants, let's conserve. How do we conserve? By having tiered rates. And we were forced to adopt that in two thousand thirteen, and that- By having tiered rates, and we were forced to adopt that in 2013, and that's where that came to be. The more you use, the more you pay, trying to adopt conservation.
So, the, the state wants us to charge bigger families more money?
They want to have a mechanism in place that would retain water usage, that would get people's attention till they conserve water. Because they, they're not gonna keep funding all these towers and all these wastewater plants and all these towns, so people can let the water run for five minutes while they brush their teeth. So, how do we, how do we get, do anything to stop that? We don't. The conservation rate is the only way they felt that could be tackled.
Well, our conservation rate is, is going down all the time. She brought this up at the last meeting, that consumption is down. I say that consumption is down because the price is so high. Now, if you wanna make commercial and industrial high, and I understand that, but I don't understand, and maybe this is something legislatively that should be taken up then, I don't understand if you have a bigger family and you're not wasting more water, you're just using more water because you got a bigger family, that you should jump to a higher rate. I just don't think that's fair.
Do we have any out? I mean, there's nothing we can do about it if it's a state mandate, correct?
What the state of Minnesota's trying to get through now is that the lower-tier people pay less money. So, there's even more of a penalty to jump into that second phase, to really get their attention. And that's gonna go fly in the face of what you're saying, that's just the opposite, that's gonna make it even worse.
It's gonna make that gap bigger.
And that's what, that's what the health department is recommending right now, to do that, that's more effective. Like I say, I, I can ask all day, you know, but until you get that two hundred dollar water bill, call me and say, what's going on? Or you go on Facebook and say, my water bill's triple, because you use triple the water.
Right, it's not penalizing bigger families, it's seeking compensation from bigger water consumers.
And the other problem we got is pressure. If you understand the water system, if we're running sixty pounds of pressure and you've got a toilet that's leaking, that's only gonna leak half the water if you've got a hundred and twenty pounds on that thing, and we got a lot of homes that have a hundred and twenty pounds. And when they get a leak, it's astronomical. And, and I, I don't think this thing is fair, I'm sorry, I just, I, to me, I don't understand why this board can't vote to increase commercial rates, but we can, we can vote to increase rates on bigger families or something like that. So, I don't know why we can't just increase commercial and industrial and, and the residential stays for a year, and then we re-study it.
Ken?
In the report, it says the average residential user in Cannon Falls right now pays ninety-six dollars and fifty-five cents. And if you look at the, in, just below that, in the next chart, it says the average commercial user pays three hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty cents. So, they're paying triple, more than triple the, the amount. If you look at the chart.
I looked at all the charts and I read them over, and I didn't come up with that.
There you go.
I'm looking at this right here. When you say two sixty-eight and three thirty-four and four seventeen, and then you come down to commercial, and I'm talking per cubic foot. And whether it's ninety-six dollars in average, I do know that I followed water for five years, and at one point, we were at eighteen bucks per person, and another time, we were at twenty-two, twenty-seven, and now we're roughly at thirty-five dollars a person. And I don't need to look at this chart, I experience this out on my calls and I experience it on my bills I get. So, I know what it costs per person. And I ain't saying that that, that is right or wrong, or that isn't where the cost should be. But I am saying that some people, to me, are not being treated fairly. And, and if you wanna charge more for sprinkling your logs, I don't know if, if, if people are on a fixed income and wanna have a garden and that they can't afford because the water get billed, gets too high to not have a garden. I, I'd rather have the water at a regular price for residents and they can have that garden. And to me, looking all this over, it does not point to that.
We have things in place for gardening, water, water consumed in residential homes for gardening purposes. That irrigation rate is not when I'm running my sprinkler at home, right? No, that irrigation rate is for commercial enterprises, right, commercial industrial properties that have an irrigation system. That rate applies to them, Leroy, not to me when I'm running my sprinkler. That's just water. And there's the credit thing that, and I am not good at the math of this, but it offsets my summer bill by a hundred and fifty percent of the difference between that and my winter bill, something like that, to make it more feasible for me to keep my garden looking gorgeous, which it does, for the record.
I guess I didn't, I didn't read it that way, but I...
It's in, it's in the memo that's attached to today's stuff. It talks about that winter offset, or the winter/summer offset to encourage and keep lawns looking nice.
Sewer discount and stuff like that. But, but I thought the rates were the same for sprinkling, I mean, the homeowner's rate.
For the water, the rates are the same, the sewer deduction comes in with...
Right.
Right. But in terms of the irrigation rate, that's not for people and their sprinklers, that's for, right? Confirm that.
It's commercial irrigation rates.
Right, so, commercial irrigation rate is substantially higher. That's not for people and their sprinklers at home. Does that help produce some measure of the unfairness?
I don't know. I guess I didn't interpret that way, so thanks for that information.
Anybody else?
I also feel like the part of your objection rests on something that kinda collapses. I hear you say, I want commercial and industrial users who use so much more to pay more. But I don't want big families who use more to pay more. I think that your distinction is the people in commercial and industrial enterprises are making money in some way. So, they, they should pay, do you see what I'm saying? If you want more, heavier consumers to pay more, then that would go the same for commercial and residential. It collapses.
The reason the bill is so high is because we've invested into dead ends here five, six years ago. So, we wouldn't have all this extra infrastructure, so now we're waiting for people to build, to come back and to pay for this infrastructure. So, now we're turning around and we're trying to charge for that, that was actually supposed to be another a hundred and twenty houses out there. But on the other hand, I don't think somebody like a car wash, that their whole business and their whole product that they're selling is water, should be the same price as a residential person. And I think if you have a big family, I don't, I don't think that should be in your decision-making, that my water bill. Yeah, it should be so much per person, but you shouldn't jump to the next bracket because you're using over three hundred cubic feet. That, that part, I don't think is fair.
Yeah, I'm gonna think of that.
Any further discussion?
I was gonna say, that's part of their decision of that, of that family, to have more people within their family. That's something we don't have control of, they, the family does. And so, ultimately, they make that decision, not you or anybody else, that family.
Yeah, I certainly understand that, and I, and I don't wanna make that decision, but I, I don't know why it jumps from two sixty-eight to three thirty-four or four seventeen.
And now, that, that higher rate would only apply to the usage in excess of the usage of the lower rate. It doesn't apply retroactively to like gallon one, right, or one hun, first hundred cubic feet. It only applies to the amount used in excess of the tier below it.
It's read in one hundred increments, one hundred cubic feet increments.
Okay, right.
So, four ninety-nine, this bill is four hundred cubic feet, because we don't, we can't jump the bill up.
Right, but that's not what I meant, I meant, if I'm reading this right, my first three hundred cubic feet are charged at X dollars. If I use four hundred cubic feet, my first three hundred are still at the lowest rate, my next hundred are billed at the higher rate. So, it's not my entire four hundred are billed at the higher rate.
Entire bill.
Exactly.
It's just an incremental.
Right, right. And that would, I can see why the state would believe that that would encourage more responsible water use, because, yeah.
I would be curious too, to know, that's one figure I would, figure I would have liked from ailers is, for every dollar we take in, how much expense do we have? We're raising the bill five percent. So, I assume if we take in a dollar, we're operating at an even price. So, if, if we, if people, if you lowered the price and people started sprinkling more, does that actually increase our overhead? Because the pumps are running more? Or because they're using more, does that just balance it out and we're still stay about neutral? So, I, the one thing I was nervous about is how much money for every dollar we take in, is our overhead to operate? And is there fifteen percent room left over there, or is there only five percent? I don't know, to me, it's, it's really a, a big issue.
Anybody else? If not, chair will take a motion, approve in resolution twenty-two eighty-three.
We already moved in second.
We got the motion.
Oh, okay. Got the, first and the second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Resolution passes, five one. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I'll read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending May the thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Item B are the meeting minutes for the May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen city council meeting. Item C is approved final payment for the two thousand sixteen street improvement project. Item D, approved final payment for the two thousand sixteen seal coat improvement project. Item E, resolution twenty-two eighty-four, supporting the Three Rivers Community Action Development Proposal. Item F, resolution twenty-two eighty-five, accepting a monetary donation in memory of Joan Ristie to the library. And item G, the second reading and adoption of ordinance three fifty-three, amending chapter one fifty-two concerning dynamic display signage locations. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down?
Item B.
Item D?
B.
B? That'll become item nine C. Which is the street improvement project. Is it C or D?
B, as in boy.
Oh, B, okay. So, that's the meeting minutes for May sixteenth, okay.
Hopefully, Ron will have an answer for me, huh?
No pressure, Ron.
You can hope.
Any other items? If not, chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item B.
I'm a second.
A motion by Mike, a second by John, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Move this on to item nine, council business. There'll be resolution twenty-two eighty-one, accepting a monetary donation for the fire department.
Yeah, it was me that brought this down last meeting, just, I just wanted Todd to come in and explain to us kinda what it is this, this device will do.
What we got proposed is basically an infrared camera that, we have three of them right now. But they are on a depreciable item, basically, that one of them is depreciated out now, and it's time to replace it. The older cameras, we can go into, just to clarify what they are basically, we can go into fires and so, after they're put out, go in and find the hot spots. This camera reads heat temperatures and stuff, and we can actually go in and find the hot spots that are left to put them out further. If we're just called to a fire scene, basically, where it's not showing any fire at all, we can go with this camera and sense all the areas and stuff with it to find out where there potentially could be a fire and go into it and solve the issues. The cameras we originally had, they're, I mean, they're big ones. Now, the cameras have got so condensed now that we can pin it right on our coat and bring it with us right in the fires. Like I say, it is a depreciable item, it is depreciated out right now. It is in the capital funds for replacement, so that's why we chose to go ahead and see if we can purchase this camera right now.
How often do you use it? Do you use it quite a bit?
Every fire.
Yeah, good. Remember when we got the very first one, it was such a novelty that we...
That was like twenty-five thousand, it was mounted on a helmet.
Was it? The one I started was, I got a big handheld camera, you looked up and it, I mean, we were all so gassed, this was really cool, but I'm not sure we used it the way we should have, so I'm glad to hear that you guys are using it.
Yeah, so, they, they've advanced quite, quite a bit since, you know, back when we originally got them and stuff, so it's amazing the things you can do with them and find with them, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Mike, second by Leroy.
Thanks, Todd.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution twenty-two eighty-one is approved. Move this on to item B, the charter commission discussion, and I'll bring that to Ron.
Well, you've had a discussion on this a couple of meetings, and after the last council meeting, I contacted the, I was actually doing some searching, searching on the league website, and then I came across where they've got a charter program, charter assistance program. So, I received the fairly large document memo that you have in your packet, that I thought was really full of a lot of good information and may help you with some of your questions. But in either case, you recall that our city attorney, Roger Knudson, had suggested that if you do wanna establish the charter commission again, or it would be to reappoint or to not reappoint, you have to, you can recommend to the district judge reappointment of seven members is what we had before. And that also the attorney with the league had also said the same thing, just basically, the first step would, would be to look for seven new members to back on your charter commission to reappoint.
The more pointed question, I think, from last time was, why was it needed? There was some objection from council members that we shouldn't need such a thing. And what we talked about, Ken and Mike and I, having attended the League of Minnesota Cities Seminar, we were under the impression, and I think the memo confirms it, that we are, have a charter city, and there's ever a charter commission, that charter commission is tasked with meeting at least annually, right?
Correct.
And we asked you to find, I think, the law that said that, because there was some debate about whether that was truly required, right? Leroy, have you had a chance to read this one? Do you feel more satisfied? Okay, do you feel more satisfied that this is a requirement?
No.
Okay, why?
Well, for one thing, I've been to the, the meetings you guys have been to before. I do have to tell you that I, I don't like them type of meetings, so I probably should go to them more often. But I will tell you that every council member here tonight, and every council member in the past, had the best intentions for the city, whether it was a charter or statutory. And I, some of these charter stuff, for lack of better words, I think I gotta put it right out there, that probably got started over Babe when he was having some problems and people were mad at him or something. And we started this charter thing, and I...
Leroy, I'm gonna interrupt you right there, the charter started in Cannon Falls in nineteen oh five.
Okay, so, anyway...
Thank you.
We, we have been at, the way I understood it, always been a statutory, and then in ninety-two or something, we put that board on or whatever.
You're mistaken.
Went for charter. But if you read all this, there's only five charters, five or seven in the state of Minnesota.
No, there are hundreds.
Okay. So, if you don't do the, the charter thing, you automatically drop back to statutory. And I don't see any advantage to a charter outside of, I suppose if you wanna write your own rules or, or do something or just not follow the normal things. I do think if we do a charter thing, it goes back to money, 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 and attorney, 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 and things just get complicated. And I, to me, we're just a small town, we... Uh, and things just get complicated. And I, to me, we're just a small town. We just take care of each other. I, I don't worry about that kind of stuff. And I don't, that doesn't make me right, but I don't see anything wrong with just being a statutory city.
Leroy, it's not, that's not up for debate. We are a charter city. We can't just say now we're going to be a statutory city. We are a charter city.
You can't, you can't, you can't-
Since nineteen oh five, since nineteen oh five.
Or right now.
We don't have a charter commission. That's the whole point. We need to have a charter commission.
Commission went away after four years of, after the last time that we updated it.
So if you read the papers in there, it said if you haven't been following the charter things, then you automatically go back to a statutory.
No.
So, well, I don't know. That's what I read in there.
That's if you never get a charter together, if you never get a charter established. We have a charter. The charter commission we are proposing
Okay.
would, would periodically review and update as necessary, or not update, but it would periodically review and be best practices for that existing charter. Have you, our city charter is available online. I strongly encourage that you've become familiar with it. It's our governing document. It's the constitution of Cannon Falls.
Well, I seen, was it ninety-two or ninety-seven, Ron, the people that were on the board at that time? Is, is that the last board we've had?
It's a charter commission. Make sure you call it what it is. It's a charter commission.
Charter commission at that time.
Yes, that was the last time.
And then, so if you want to check into the legal thing, what I read in here is that if you don't honor that and keep that going and keep that board, you automatically go back to statutory. So now it looks to me like if we're gonna stay charter, then we have to let people to this. You have to go to the attorney, uh, to have this approved, uh, or judge, I don't know what it all is.
No.
It drove me nuts reading it all.
You don't just revert to statutory. That does not happen. It would have to be, oh, I think, a, a affirmative action on behalf of the electorate, I would imagine. It would completely change the nature, we're not, we're not in danger of, we haven't reverted to statutory city. That's not on the table. It's not a thing. So you're reading it, you're reading it wrong, with all due respect.
Okay, here's, and Leroy, to go back to a, to abandon a charter is by presenting a proposal, adopting it and having it become effective in the same manner as a charter amendment. Accordingly, abandon will require the approval of fifty-one percent of those voting on the question.
Right.
That's what it would take. And that's on page, uh, eighteen, chapter four.
If we had never gotten a charter together, if we had, if we were a new city and we were considering being a charter city and we just never really got a charter together and nothing ever happened, then rather than being in a void, we would be a statutory city by default. But we have a charter. We have a functioning charter that we abide by today. A charter commission is what we should do in, in the good, right, best practice to continue to update and improve that charter as a living sort of document. Right? So.
Well, my point last meeting was I thought that the charter we had looked good, and then now we go to improve it like Leroy is saying, it's gonna cost legal fees after legal fees to change it.
But I don't, I don't, I don't think we're looking at improving the charter. I think we're just looking at reestablishing the charter commission, isn't it?
That would be the first step.
Basically, what we're saying is we're gonna reestablish the commission. We would have to, and the only legal fees, because we're already paying Knutson anyway, is the fact that we have to have him prepare the information to present it to the, to the judge.
Right. It's just a list of people. The judge is gonna essentially rubber stamp. They have to be, and all of the people that are on this charter commission are just anyone entitled to vote in the city. That's it. There's no lawyers involved in that. You can, you can exclude all lawyers if you so choose. There's a form that would have to be submitted. The charter commission would be established. Those people could meet. They would develop recommendations. We would consider them here, right, probably? And then the charter could be amended by an act of that body. I don't see why attorneys are involved.
What would have to happen at that point to amend it, then it'd have to go to a vote during the election.
Yeah, yeah.
And it'd have to be fifty-one percent of the number of people that voted during the last general election.
But I thought charter, I thought you only had to do the vote of the electorate when you didn't have a charter commission making those recommendations. I thought they were alternatives. There, you have to have both.
That might be right. I'd, I'd have to double check, but I think if you point the, uh, or not point, recommend appointment and seven members are appointed, I think then it's up to them to, they'd hold their annual meeting.
Yeah.
And they could recommend changes to you. Uh, I'm not sure how that exactly works.
I thought that the vote was what you did when you didn't have a charter commission, that that was the only way to improve your charter if you didn't have a commission.
Others, amendment by proposal, which our charter commission may propose amendments to the charter at any time.
Right.
Uh, there's a citizen petition.
Right.
And, uh, then there's a process and procedure, uh, to go through that, so.
Okay.
I mean, we would have to look at that at that time if they just so decided that we needed to do it.
Right, but that's all far down the road. Today, our question is, do we proceed with establishing a charter commission? Given that we are a charter city and that charter cities are required to have annual meetings of a charter commission. Ken?
What it, what it said in there though is that we're supposed to have been having a charter commission all the time. But, um, many cities have forgotten about the fact that they're supposed to be doing that. Um, and so we would be, by bringing that back, we'd be, uh, one of the few cities to actually be following the law as, uh, it's stated.
I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure it's accurate that we'd be one of the few. I think it's that there are many that don't, but I'm not sure that it's quali- quantitative, like there's a majority and a minority here.
Yeah.
In any event, it would be, it's what is considered to be best practice among charter cities.
Yes.
So we're looking for a motion to reestablish a charter commission? Because if that's what we're doing, I'll make it. There's no, so.
Well, I was just gonna say, um, you raised a question of, uh, approval of modifications to the charter.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, thirteen of twenty-six talks about election. Any modifications to the charter must be approved by the voters.
Okay.
So the, the board itself, or commission itself, wouldn't be able to make those modifications.
Right.
But they would be able to bring them to the voters, I believe. I'd have to read further, but, uh, that was the, the down and dirty of, they have to be approved by the voters.
And this commission may read the charter and say they don't feel there's anything needing to be changed at this time. I mean, it's been, I mean, we made the adjustment back in ninety, it's on the charter.
Ninety-seven, I thought it was.
Two or seven, something?
Ninety-seven, I think was the last time that we.
The charter, charter's been amended since then. I think it was like two thousand twelve.
When Aaron was here.
Yeah.
Is, was the last time it was amended.
That's right.
The one thing I'd point out to council too, that I read the whole packet and as I read, read through it, it was up and down, okay, maybe, maybe this, maybe that, okay. But then you turn to the last page, which was C, what's disadvantage of, of home rule charter. And I was really quite shocked by all the disadvantages in there. And after I read that, I could not see any advantage to charter or to one or the other outside of that statutory. It's a simple one. And charter is a complicated one that involves money. And I get tired of spending money all the time. Thank you.
Well, if you read the last one in that section, Leroy, it says the procedure for abandoning the charter form of city government may be similarly complicated to try to abandon the charter. And I don't think that's what the people want, uh, in Cannon Falls. It'd be up to the voters whether or not we would ever change it. I don't think that's going to, going to happen.
Right.
Can we find out from our attorney, is it this simple to just, uh, put it before a judge and point a board or?
We already have asked that question, and it is.
Is there a penalty because we didn't follow up and have a board all these years? And are we legally still charter even without a board? Or are we statutory and now we gotta make a charter again? I, I think there's a lot of questions to be asked.
I don't want, I don't think we should spend the money with lawyer.
No, all those questions are already answered.
That's kind of what we're trying to get around here, isn't it? Spending money with lawyer?
Right.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get around. I mean, we just did the bylaws for the fair. That took us a lot of time and a lot of effort.
Won't be anything like that.
And a lot of legal fees involved on it.
This won't be anything like that.
Okay, I do have a motion by Mike.
I'll second it.
And a second by Cedar to reestablish the charter commission. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Motion passes four-two. That brings us on to item C, which is the ascending, are the, uh, meeting minutes from the May sixteenth city council meeting. And you pulled that down, Ken?
Yeah, I was, uh, reading through it and got down to page fourteen, uh, in there and it says, um, let's see where to go. Uh, the process of adding this as a council action item was discussed. The motion was made by Cedar, council member of body, second by council member of body, uh, and unanimously carried. So I, I'm, was wondering how she'd managed to do that.
Can do it all. Just kidding, I'm sure it was a typographical error.
Uh, council member Carpenter had brought that to my attention. I had intended to view the video of the meeting because Lynell was the one that took the notes. And she's out, and so I'm going to rely on the collective memory of this group. If that's okay, unless you want me to, on a recess and I can, and we can look back at the video very quickly on who made the motion and the second.
I spent some time thinking about it and I could not recall, uh, so it's gonna have to-
I'm gonna have to go to the video. It was you? It was probably you. Yeah.
I seconded it.
Okay.
Which, uh, which part? Was that which page?
Uh, page fourteen.
It's like the third paragraph down, the second short paragraph.
Yeah.
Right here.
I'm getting there.
This is about the assessment thing, huh?
Starts out with the process.
Okay. I don't remember who made the, who seconded that one?
Mike saying he did.
I did.
He just said he did.
Well, I mean, we can check the, the tape. I mean, we want to make sure it's right. Because if somebody was to bring it up and it's not right, then.
If you want to, if you want to table approval of the minutes, we can bring them up on the twentieth.
Yeah, because we're meeting next week anyway, so, uh, I recommend we, uh, table the meeting minutes from May sixteenth until such time as we get the correct. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Bring this on to reports.
I wouldn't recommend doing it this week, but perhaps next week, if you get a chance to get across the roundabouts and check the west side, uh, redevelopment projects underway, you'll see that the Grand State Hotel is well on its way under construction, as, as is Alexander Court. Uh, haven't heard of any new concerns or problems with either of those projects at this time, so that's good. And Strike Tools Edition is, is, is progressing quite rapidly as well. Looks, uh, looks really nice. On the east side, um, Grandpa's Garage, soon to be, uh, Artisan Plaza, uh, was issued a building permit and has begun construction on the roof there. Um, so we're expecting over the course of the next several months that, uh, that project will, will take shape too, so. Uh, finally seeing some, uh, some activity based on all the hard work of the city council and staff and, and the, uh, private, private sector investors in these projects.
You'll also see this week, I think it is, that, uh, the old hardies will start coming down also, because MinDOT's gonna be bringing that down, so. Greg?
Since Dave stole my only note, but Alexander Court, they, uh, finished moving the hydrant today and they're planning curb at the end of the week. And then about a week later, they can pay. So they're on schedule to have that, uh, in and hard surface here by, by, by the end of the month. Good.
Tom?
Well, I already used my line about the toilet usage, so I'll go into some other topics. So, uh, I'd like to thank staff for the recent couple of weeks. I've been kind of tough with the rains. We chase branches and trees and sand and rebuild our, uh, alleyways and so it kind of gets kind of frustrating, but, uh, they've did a good job in, uh, keeping up with that and I'm very thankful to them.
Chief?
Well, the, uh, the big thing this week is going to be the bike race on Thursday, June fifteenth. Uh, the start time is earlier this year. Uh, it's gonna start at three P M. for the women and three forty-five for the men. Uh, with the women returning at five thirty and the men at six thirty. Our plan is to try to get the, uh, s- east side circuit area opened up in between the men's and the women's race. Depending upon if the men are running earlier, we may, you know, have to modify that. Uh, but ultimately, we've got to get it secured before the, the riders get back in. Uh, and if nothing, nothing else, we will work to escort people in and out. Uh, so if anybody got home, uh, from work and didn't get there before the riders arrived, we can try to get them there as soon as possible. Uh, as, as usual, it will be some inconvenience to people trying to get down to, uh, the, uh, softball fields by public works or to the, uh, grass, uh, and branch, um, dump down there. My suggestion would be is just don't take your branches or brush that day. Uh, and the, uh, anybody that's using the softball field, we're trying to get them down there as, as much as we can in between. Kids' race is at five, so if you're, uh, watching and you're gonna come down, please bring your kids down, get there a little early. Uh, maybe, uh, you know, four forty-five, four thirty, so you can register them and be all set to go. Uh, that's always, uh, to me, one of the funner parts of the, of the race. That's all I have.
Thanks, Chief.
Do that right after you drop your brush off? Uh, just a few items. Uh, HBC, been, I've been meeting with them here last couple of weeks off and on and, uh, they will be starting their fiber project and they will have us served. The, you know, they, through the discussions early on, they, they promised to start with the municipal buildings because of our terrible phone service that's actually, uh, internet-based. And so they will, by the middle of July, would, they should have service to city hall, public safety and public works. And I don't have the rest of their schedule, what, what their build-out is, but it's still on the two-year, two-year timeframe. Do you want to report on Limestone Road?
Should, no, you should. You did the work.
Um, you recall, we discussed Limestone Road at the last meeting. And I did send letters out to S E H and to, uh, S M Henches. And tentatively were set up for next week to meet. Uh, Steve Henches did respond that he would, would be willing to meet. And Greg is willing to meet, and, uh, so we'll, we're trying to get that set up for next week. And the interchange, I sent out an email prior to the meeting tonight, the interchange, the paving will be done Thursday night. They'll work on it overnight. And the, uh, interchange will be open as of five A M. Friday morning, in theory.
Mm-huh.
And the, the weather looks, looks fine last I checked, so hopefully that is the case. And they, they did send out a press release today and you do have a copy of that in your email. And I will be at the League of Minnesota Cities Annual Conference the next couple of days, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Ron.
Yeah, a couple of things. Um, I, I think the trail board met after our last meeting and before this one. That was, seems so long ago that I don't really remember for sure, but when we did meet, uh, we approved the final draft of the master plan that, that Scott presented to us, so uh, in a matter of weeks, I think that will be formally, uh, disseminated to all of the, all of the different bodies, so, um, price tag hasn't dropped. Um, but we keep saying it's a master plan and those invariably change, so, uh, but that will be coming soon.
It has dropped or?
No, it has not dropped. No. And, and they're coming to Altos for donations. Um, and then, uh, Dave Farmer's Market? Can we update that?
I, I was gonna comment on that too.
I'll, I'll give it my best shot. I'm on the Farmer's Market interim board of directors and we've had some, some very lively discussions here the last couple of weeks. Uh, Mr. Maroni mentioned the, uh, Grandpa's Garage location. David Olson is, uh, has plans to open up his own farmer's market. And he has plans to do that within the next week or two. Um, and so we, we've been in negotiations and talks with the vendors at our current market and, uh, kind of laid some options out on the table. Do they want to join David? Do they want to stay where they're at? And the consensus at this time seems to be that they want to stay where they're at for this summer at least. Um, I think a lot of them would like to stay longer, but, but that may not be possible depending on what happens with, with some expansion down at the parking lot, so. Um, if you're a, a fresh produce connoisseur, um, in the next couple of weeks, you should have two different places to go, so. Uh, that's kind of where we're at. So if you do hear anything a- about, you know, the market and all that kind of stuff, uh, Dave and Diane have done an exemplary job of trying to navigate some, some difficult waters with, uh, with the different vendors and, uh, uh, you know, they all love what they do and, uh, tensions were high for a while and I think we've got everything pretty much straightened out and, and so. Yeah, did I miss anything?
I'll make, I'll make a comment when you're done.
Planning commission did hold a public hearing last night on the multi-pronged commission, conditional use permit that David Olson needs for his project, of which one component is outside sales, also known- also known as Farmer's Market. And clearly, that was the most controversial, uh, part of his application, but the planning commission did recommend last night approval of the conditional use permit, including the outside sales, and that recommendation will come to you, uh, next Tuesday.
I have nothing further.
Um, let's see, we had a public comment regarding cost to repair and resurface the tennis courts at the high school. I plan to attend the school board meeting tomorrow that I believe is a special meeting devoted entirely to discussion of the tennis courts. Um, there, there has been some movement in what that project, the scope of that project originally, when it was, we discussed it at city hall with, uh, with Beth. Um, it was a, like a three hundred thousand dollar project, and we had some trepidation about, you know, loading in at any level there. Although we do recognize that's, because it's, uh, it's not owned just by this, by the school, city personnel, people can use it freely. Um, if it were, if it solely belonged to the school, if it had historically always belonged to the school, we wouldn't, they, they could make it private. So, uh, we had talked about some level of participation, but at the, in the three hundred thousand dollar neighborhood, we were not making many moves in that direction. But they have now received, um, a bid from a contractor who's willing to stand behind resurfacing work for, uh, seven years, for a seven-year period. They hadn't been able to get that before. There's apparently some subfloor issues, and someone doing resurfacing was never gonna guarantee it, so that sounded like a non-starter for them. Now they found a contractor who will stand behind the work for the much reduced price of about seventy-five thousand, I believe. Um, and they have some money set aside at the district, and I understand that the fire department has generously agreed to share some portion of its pull tab and other fundraising proceeds. And I think some other local units and entities have agreed to start chipping in. So now I think there's, there's more room for that kinda discussion. I'm gonna go and hear more tomorrow, and I look forward to that. Thanks.
Yeah, I was just gonna add another comment about Farmer's Market. The planning commission met last night, and we proved a, a variance for our garage at Far One West Coville. We also granted a conditional, like Dave said, a conditional use for Georgia and the Rock out at south of town, Dave Olson's project. But the, the group of, from the Farmer's Market was at our planning commission last night. And their concern, uh, personally, I feel that once Dave gets his thing out there and they see what they've got, they're gonna move out there. But the, the, uh, group from the Farmer's Market were upset that they were told that they had to leave. I think that's where the problem lies. If we would've just said, you know, do your thing, cause maybe Dave won't be in operation for a few months. Let him stay down there for the, till the end of the year, and then they see what he's got. Personally, I think they're all gonna move out to Dave's, out there south of town. I have mixed feelings because the Farmer's Market and being in business downtown brings a lot of people to town on Saturday morning. And we see that in our businesses down there. So now you're moving it out of town, so. But now, like you said, we got the winery expansion, we got the brewery opening. Parking's gonna be at a premium there on Sa- Saturday mornings, cause I can see that side of it too, that maybe it's best that that's where it goes.
You know that Farmer's Market, when you guys brought that up, it's so fascinating. About four years ago, uh, we did a study on the Farmer's Market, and because of the traffic problems and the safety problems in that parking lot, we came up with the idea that we should put it down, the overflow parking lot, and that should be a good thing. And they'd have the whole parking lot to themselves. They could have signage down there. And holy buckets, it went over like a lead balloon.
Yeah.
So I totally appreciate when you guys talk about the challenges. Uh, it's so amazing how you can think one way, you're trying to do the right thing and the good thing, but not necessarily everybody agrees with you.
Their point being, they've been down in that parking lot for twenty years, and now you're saying move, and, you know, they've become accustomed with. And, I mean, you might have some bad seeds down there, but I mean, it's a good group down there too.
The one good thing that's happening, and I gotta thank the police department, is that a few years ago, we finally got them to move from right at the opening of the parking lot because there was pickup sitting there and blockage as far as seeing and stuff. So a lot of safety issues have been talked about and worked through, so it, it's a good thing. Uh, but yeah, it's always a challenge.
That's all I got. You sure? Okay. Leroy?
Uh, just a couple of things. Uh, just wanna thank the Risti family. I also wanted to let the board know that, uh, some new things that are going on at the library. Uh, they're starting up a program for elderly or whoever's homebound. That their start, they got volunteers that'll take and deliver books and pick them up and do stuff like that. And this is a new thing that, uh, our new library director has gotten going. So there's some good and exciting things going on at the library. And I just wanted to make a mention too of, I think it's next week, the school is having this big doings where these five hundred people are coming in to help with housing and painting and different stuff. And I just wanted to mention, um, that I'm sure there was some challenges there, and thanks to the school for donating that. And there's meals involved, and a lot of, took a lot of time to make that work. So it's good for the city and, uh, really appreciate that. And I guess that's it.
Uh, I'd like to mention that we had a, a good trip, uh, to Washington, D.C. Met with our legislators, stated our case about why we need to get, uh, the bridge built in town and, uh, a few other projects, uh, to help improve safety, uh, in Good Hugh County. And, uh, they seemed quite receptive to that, and hopefully, uh, something will come of that. And contrary to the rumor that a couple of my friends are starting, uh, about H B C, putting, uh, the fiber optic down my street among the first area, no, I had nothing to do with that.
But what's wrong with that?
And lastly, I'd like to mention that, uh, tomorrow is Flag Day. I hope, uh, a lot of people will put their flags up. The day, that's the day that we formally, uh, adopted, uh, our, uh, U.S. flag, so.
And with that said, I, I'll be hosting the, uh, Flag Day ceremony at the Veterans Memorial, uh, for the VFW. I will have the Boy Scouts there. We'll be talking about the flag a little bit, saying the pledge, and we'll be doing a small ceremony for Flag Day. Six o'clock.
All I could say is, uh, I think things are going good in town. You know, it's, uh, it seems like some of the buildings are being occupied or going to be occupied soon. It looks good.
Uh, again, on the trip to D.C., we, we did have a good trip to Washington. We were able to meet with, uh, Senator Franken and Senator Klobuchar. I also was able to, uh, have a moment with, uh, Jason Lewis. We did talk to his people more than I'd had a chance to talk with him. But I was, I, I did get a card from him already in the mail. Uh, I talked to him Wednesday, and Monday I had a card in the mail from him, but, uh, he's willing to come to town. So I'll be working with his people to, uh, get, uh, Representative Lewis in here, cause, uh, he is our new congressional, uh, representative, uh, for our area. So, uh, we'll get him down here, uh, to meet everybody and, and see what he has to say about what's going on. Washington's a busy place, as we all know, and, uh, um, we heard from, uh, both sides of the aisle. And, uh, they seem to be trying to work together. It's gonna take a little while, but, uh, you know, we'll see what gets done. Um, they were, uh, all the legislators were receptive though to, uh, uh, to the Highway fifty-two quarter. And, uh, we'll keep working with them and get any recommendations we can. They just wouldn't give me a bag of money to bring home. Anyway, with that said, uh, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.